Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Terrence Curtis of Calvary Baptist Church in Jonesboro, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with him.
Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our solemn tears, you've been our help in ages past, our shelter from the storm and blast. We come tonight, oh God, to invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have differences of opinion, give us the unity of spirit. Help us to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a united team in combining ideas for the greater good of Clayton County. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of cooperation in this room and work together so that Clayton will be a better place for us all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 21st regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Any amendments or additions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
All right. The first, we'll start with, there are a couple of items that are additions. The first item will be Resolution Number 2023-53. It is an emergency item to be added for correction of information sent out on behalf of the Board without the Board approval or vote. And that does require a vote.
Yes, and state the reason why it's an emergency item.
It's time sensitive.
Time sensitive based on what?
It's time sensitive, sir, and I call for the question.
All right. Is there a motion to this?
I make the motion.
I mean, a second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Are there any questions?
Why is this an emergency item? I mean, is this affecting how we do business with the county and the people's business?
I guess you want to get an answer to that.
I'm just curious, does it?
The code is very clear on the way information should go out. That has the letterhead of the Board on it. And once again, I call for the question. So I'm prepared. I think we should call for the vote, Mr. Chair.
All right. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Nay, it's three two, it passes.
All right.
Next?
I have another item here, which is Resolution 20-23. And this resolution is in regards to Resolution 167 that is introduced by the General Assembly. And it is for the Board to vote, as we all aware that this may not be the best timing for such. And so I make that set motion.
All right, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any questions? And my question is, once again, how does this constitute an emergency item to be added on this agenda?
I have a question. Chuck, if we add something, whatever, does it have to be? Does it, do we have to state it's an emergency?
So under the code, first, good evening, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board. Madam Commissioner, the code says that when an item is to be added to the agenda before the Board, it has to be done on the Wednesday prior to the Board meeting. However, you all have the authority to bring items onto the Board for consideration in the event that there is an emergency or something. You couch it as an emergency, but if it's an issue that needs to be decided by the Board, you can bring it on at that time.
Okay. I didn't think we had a claim.
So you mean to tell me we can bring anything before the Board after the date, before the due date, and don't have to justify why it's an emergency item?
No. What I said is that you all have given yourselves the authority that if something comes up that you need to address at a meeting that arises after Wednesday, that you put it on the agenda, you explain the reason why it needs to be considered at that Board meeting. You all couch that as an emergency, although technically it doesn't necessarily mean emergency, but it means that you need to address it prior to the next Board meeting.
So as we got to say it's an emergency to us and...
You don't have to say emergency.
Hold on a second, Commissioner. Go ahead.
You were going to say something?
Emergency, yeah, I asked a question. All we got to do is say it's an emergency and it's done.
Well, you all couch it as an emergency, but basically it's an item that can't wait to the next Board meeting is really what it actually is.
And that's what I'm asking, why can't this wait till the next Board meeting?
That's up to the person who's bringing it before this.
So the person bringing it forward don't have to give a response?
They can give a justification for what is the reason why?
Do they need to?
Yes, they should, yes.
So again, I ask, why can't this wait till the next Board meeting?
Once again, it's time sensitive. My motion remains on the floor.
I mean, Commissioner Davis.
House Resolution 167. First of all, I guess my question is, is this trying to tell the State how to do their business? We have our State Representatives. If they put something forward, if we have questions, shouldn't we go to them? One. And two, what is that resolution stating?
Okay, to your fir-
I have it before me, but I'd like you to say it.
Okay. To the first, to the first point, the Board can give and has in the past given direction to the delegation as to particular policy matters that the delegation has brought up, statements in support or in opposition to. So that's not directing the State to do, or the State delegation to do something one way or the other, but just focusing this Board's position as it relates to that particular item. As it relates to House Resolution 167, that resolution speaks to a resolution naming this street portion between McNona and, I believe it's Route 64, right in front of the Police Department, for Chief Jeffrey E. Turner, recognizing Chief Turner as the first African-American police chief for Clayton County.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Three two, it passes.
And we would like to suggest also that we had a sitting Commissioner to pass away while battling cancer and did not miss days hardly. She even served up until her last day of passing that week. So it is imperative that, I would hope that we would consider that and consider the integrity of the Board itself in the sense that, I'm not sure if that tenure was completed, the county, in that capacity. So I'll move on to the next one. Resolution 2023.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. Chairman.
Commissioner Davis. You know, in light of this being Black History Month, and we bring up an individual that is living in our presence, who was the first black Chief of Police in Clayton County, and for the State to recognize him, and then we come to deny his recognition, to me, it's not just a slap in the face of him, but a slap in the face of every black Clayton County citizen.
Commissioner Hambrick.
The State hasn't done anything. That's only been a proposal by a couple, three, I think, Representatives. That has, the State has not done anything.
What we really would like-
This Board is the one making the recommendation to oppose it, so.
Right.
That's what's before us. Any others?
Let's move on to the next. Yes.
Oh, anything?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody. Commissioner Davis, I think you were saying so.
Yes, I want to go ahead and pull off Resolution 2023-49 to the regular agenda.
Thirty-one, item thirty-one. All right, any others? You, wait a minute, you're clear on that, Madam Clerk? Item thirty-one.
I'm clear.
All right, any others?
Yes, number twenty-four, Resolution 2023-40. Right, I don't want to pull it off, I just want to pull it out for discussion.
You want to put it on-
On the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda.
Yes.
Any others?
Yes. We have another item that needs to be added because of time sensitivity. Again, National Council of Negro Women is hosting an event at Flint River Community Center, and we need to have this one added to the agenda, because we would not have a meeting prior to that time period as well. So they could go ahead and get to advertising.
Unless there are motions, is there a second?
I second it.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Also, Mr. Chair, item four, items, hmm, item four and seven separately along with-
Which ones?
Item four, item number four.
All right.
Which is the contract for CGL, just take it separately. Item seven, which is the contract for Nova, we'll just take that one separately. And item thirteen, twenty-three.
Item thirteen, and what else?
Thirteen, uh...
I have four, seven, thirteen.
And thirteen, I need a little bit more on that one. We could just take that one. I'm going to make sure that they aren't changing. One second, I apologize. I'll go by the computer, and sometimes when you print them, they're a little different. So seven is, yes, commercial plan reviews for Nova, and then item four. There is, those are just separate, but there is one other piece that we need to address, and it's the boiler. I just need to know, do we have to vote on that tonight for the, does it require a vote? Because I would like for that one to be done too, because we want our kids and folks to be able to swim. And based upon the agreement, that is our responsibility as a Board.
Mr. Stanford.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, no Commissioner, the actual funding to support the boiler itself is actually in building and maintenance budget. The question that we're contemplating is whether or not we go through the temporary, use the temporary solution, and look at the full-time solution. So if ultimately the school system is looking at utilizing the pool to do the middle school swim meets, and we want to put a temporary solution in space, we just ensure that we can find the $26,000 to take care of the boiler on the front end for the temporary solution.
We need to do that. I've spoken directly with the school system myself. They do not have another solution, as Dr. Smith, I spoke to him directly, as well as to Dr. Townsend.
We can find the funding for the temporary solution, if that's the pleasure of this Board.
That, do we, I think we need to ratify that, just that you're asking if it's a pleasure in an open meeting, perhaps?
I believe we can, we have the funding that we can find the $26,000. We're fine.
We're good. All right, good deal. I think that's about it.
Anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chair, I have a clarification. What item, Commissioner Hambrick, were you pulling off for the regular agenda?
Number twenty-four, Resolution forty.
Resolution what?
Forty, twenty, twenty-three, forty.
And Commissioner Davis was item number thirty-one, Resolution 2023-49.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to put it on the regular agenda.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Go ahead.
If you want to, we're looking to pull item twenty-four. We want to get some additional information, so if it's a pleasure of the Board, we can table item twenty-four until the next Board meeting.
Oh, okay. Because you all received an email, I sent out a copy of a letter-
Yes, ma'am.
-text message I received from one of my constituents regarding that.
Yes, ma'am.
And anyway, I want to find out what's going on with that.
Yeah, we can table twenty-four if I'll, okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to table Resolution 2023-40. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
One more. Item thirty-two. If the Board, if the pleasure of the Board, we can table item thirty-two as well.
Most definitely. You can remove it.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to remove item thirty-two, Resolution 2023-50?
So moved.
So?
Well, I made the motion. Commissioner Anderson, second motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Any others?
Hi, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I've got an emergency budget amendment that I'd like to bring tonight for the Sheriff's Office.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. It is an amendment to, for, to provide buildings and maintenance, the funding to provide some emergency needed repairs for the Clayton County Jail, amount of $3,63,951.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? No questions, but I'll make a statement that, uh...
You asked for questions, you need to give it a chance, Mr. Chair, no offense.
Well, I will address you in just a second, Commissioner Franklin. I have toured the jail, and there is, the jail is definitely in need of some repairs. And I've asked the Sheriff's Department to provide a number that would be not a Band-Aid, but enough to make sure that we correct what it needs to be corrected within the facility. And that's how this number came about. Commissioner Franklin.
I think it's important for us to understand that the office of all constitutional officers is the responsibility of the Board. That's number one. Number two, that there are fees that are received that should have been used for the upkeep of that building, that unfortunately this Board was made aware was being used for, through the Finance Division prior to you, for salaries as opposed to the upkeep of the building. So this is something that is important to go on record, and I'm glad that you and Angela are there to get these things corrected, because funds are put into, we accept fees and accept funds for specific purposes. And when they're not being used for that purpose, then this is what happens. So thank you so very much for the work that you and your staff have been doing, so that we can get this corrected.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, because we were presented with this sometime back, some weeks ago, and the amount was two point something. And now it has changed to three point something. And also, I looked at the list of things that need to be done, and I saw toilets on there three different times.
So Ben can just, can...
Mr. Hopkins, please come to the podium. And I think there's three different types of toilets that go into that.
And I think there may be some safety things we can't even discuss here in this open session, so let's be very careful, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Board, Chairman, Vice Chair. We attended building maintenance, I attended the tour with Chairman, and the COO with Sheriff's Staff. When we walked through, I was asked to provide a number based on the facility issues that we had, and the Sheriff's Office was going to provide a number based on the security issues that they had. The two numbers, the two emails collated, and I created a spreadsheet today that I'll provide to you all, specifically as it relates to the toilets. I asked for a number of cells that the toilets were out, that was one number. The number of dayroom toilets that were out, that was a second number, and the number of toilets in the dorms that are out. So there's three different types of toilets that are at three different cost points, including the installation. There's actually a fourth toilet, because we're doing a detox toilet to create some suicide watch cells that currently have toilets that become a problem whenever the inmates are placed in that space. So the detox toilets provided an extra layer of security and safety for the inmates going to that space.
Okay, but that wasn't explained on that list.
Correct, that's, I've got this to provide to you this evening.
Any other questions?
Can we see the list?
I'm writing it to you right now.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Madam Clerk?
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
One more, Mr. Chair. Forty-one and forty-two, can we hold those items in advance?
We need to hold them in advance.
Because one of them may even include employment. Forty-one and forty-two, Development Authority.
No, we'll address them as we come to it, as opposed to addressing it. That way, the Board have a say.
No, okay.
So we'll hold it until we get to that portion. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Our next item is a presentation, eighteen holes for Hero's Check. This is presented by Chief Landry Murkison.
I'll be brief and quick. Several months ago, I had the opportunity to chair the first eighteen holes for Hero Golf Tournament Committee, which was an event sponsored by the Board, held by Commissioner Dr. Aleka Anderson to support Clayton County Public Safety, get representatives from our Sheriff's Office. It was a very successful tournament. We didn't have a lot of time to put it together, but we got it done. Our tournament was held in memory, and by all accounts was a great success. So it is my pleasure, oh, I talk about it now. It is my pleasure on behalf of the Tournament Committee and the Clayton County Public Safety Partners in our community that helped make this a success, to formally present the Board of the Commissioners with the proceeds from that tournament, which totaled $33,859. That would keep me convinced for our Clayton County Public Safety Agency.
Ah, no, no, we can't do that. We work together as a community. We can do it, please, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner, did we see a Senator out there? He voted for us to be able to do this. Yes, come on.
Come on, send the damn vote.
The Board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
Did we add this part to the consent or to the regular agenda?
What part is that?
This.
Uh, to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number four, Recommendation for Award SWC, number nineteen-seven-two, Facilities Maintenance Solutions for Clayton County, presented by Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners. First item is statewide contract number nineteen-seven-two. The BLC approved the award for the above reference contract on April the 10th, 2019. The recommendation is to utilize the statewide contract for facility maintenance solutions with CGL Facility Management. They're located in El Paso, Texas, for water slide restoration at the Spivey Splash Water Park. The amount of the project is one hundred eighty-four, one hundred eighty-four, I'm sorry, one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-four thousand, ninety-three dollars. Funding for this project is available through the Community Development Block Grant, HUD Funding, as well as SPLAS 2021 Fund, and the General Fund. The Department's recommendation and vendor proposal are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
My only question is, if we're pulling it from the Community Block Grant, are we going to have to do this every year to redo this slide?
I'm going to defer to Director Hodges as far as how often we would need to have the restoration done for the slide.
Because I thought, yeah, because, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners, yes, to answer your question, Commissioner, it's, we're going to redo the slides on a, every five-year basis.
Okay. Every five years.
Yes.
And we're pulling it from the block grant, okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Next is item number seven.
Okay, thank you. The recommendation is to award the contract, which is RFP-22-294, which is Residential and Commercial Building Inspection and Commercial Plan Reviews for the Community Development Department. The recommendation is awarded to the most responsive and responsible proponent. The vendor is going to be Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC. They're located in Kennesaw, Georgia, for residential and commercial building inspections and commercial plan review. The proponent will receive 38% per year of the revenue collected from the descriptions listed in Exhibit A. The evaluation tabulation summary, the Department's recommendation and agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll make, I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
I have a question. Is Mr. Jiki here?
Mr. Jiki.
Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening. I have a question regarding the utilizing them. Is this for internal, or is this based upon what was passed with the State and for those who are paying online outside of the county?
I know, it's, excuse me, it's not with the State. It's something we've been using for, for a while now. I'm not sure if you remember, when we had problems filling inspection positions, so we went out to a third party to do it. So the aspect of the State, it's when a contractor elects to do some, some aspects of the construction phase, then they're allowed to do that.
Okay. So we are bidding, we bid it out because we didn't hire people in this position?
Yeah, that's initially. This is, the, the contract have run its course based on the first time. So it's, it was up now to be actually, to be repeated, and they actually won't.
Is this the same company we use to do our COs within our building? I brought that up before to you.
I, yes.
This is the same company?
Yes.
And our buildings have leaks? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. I also want to make us all aware that this company actually was responsible for a lot of our buildings. And I could tell you, Flint River, we're still dealing with moisture, we're still dealing with issues there. I don't know if Commissioner from District Four has walked in this building, but I've had developers contact me and say they won't touch it with a ten-foot pole, because they don't know who gave the CO and who approved it. And you have that information. The only reason, it's not at you, but it's just, we got to be more diligent about hiring companies who don't do their job on behalf of the citizens of this county.
All right, Madam Clerk, the vote is three two, it passes. Next.
Next is item number thirteen.
This is for a award through GTA, which is Georgia Technology Association. Our number is twenty-three dash forty-five, and it's for the purchase of InfoSec Strategic Assessment for the IT Department. The recommendation is to utilize the contract, the master service- The recommendation is to utilize the contract, the master service agreement, with Gardner, Inc., located in Stanford, Connecticut, for the purchase of the InfoSec Strategic Assessment in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand. Funding is available through the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. The department's recommendation, vendor's quote, and GTA information sheet are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second a motion, are there any questions? Here are none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, two up passes. Next.
Next item is item number thirty-one, Resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-nine, Chief Staff Attorney Charles Reed.
Is it thirty-one?
Item number thirty-one?
Item number thirty-one.
Commissioner Davis. We move that to the regular agenda. Oh, that's where we're at? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that now where we are?
Yes, that's where we are.
All right, proceed, please. All right, uh, Resolution twenty-two-three forty-nine is a resolution to provide for the renaming of certain streets and roadways in Clayton County, to remove names associated with the Confederate States of America, to authorize the chairman to execute any required document and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, it dies due to the lack of a second. Next. Uh, let me, can I make a comment? Yes. Commissioner Davis. This item was brought about by a high school senior that lives in that neighborhood, from Jonesboro High School, who basically stated, when I walk through my neighborhood, it's hard for me to look at names of people that wanted to keep me or make me a slave if I walk through this neighborhood. He's the one that initiated this. That young man should be commended on what he's done. Folks wanna talk about what we got, what we should keep and what we must keep. There was a letter from Robert E. Lee in December of eighteen sixty-six, where he states, as regards to the erection of such a monument, as is contemplated by my conviction is that however grateful it would be to the feeling of the South, the attempt in the present condition of the country would have the effect of retarding instead of accelerating its accomplishments and of continuing, if not adding to the difficulties under which the Southern people labor. And I think that statement can still, uh, resound loudly here and today. He also stated, again, in the victim, in the Republican Vindicator, September thirtieth, eighteen sixty-nine, I think it wiser, moreover, not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the example of those nations whose endeavor to obliterate the Marxist civil strife, to commit to oblivion the feelings endangered. In light of the recent deaths of Black men by the hands of the police, this statement resounds loudly. And this is something that must be revisited, and I will not stop until the names in those neighborhoods, street names, have been changed. Next.
Uh, Resolution twenty-two-three fifty is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners opposing House Resolution one sixty-seven, introduced during the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four legislative session of the Georgia General, General Assembly, to authorize the clerk to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Don't have a question, but I do have a statement. And that is no secret that Commissioner Franklin has been out to cause harm to my reputation, and this is, once again, a grandstanding of hers to try to keep, uh, anybody from recognizing me for the thirty-four years of work that I've done here in Clayton County. But I'm gonna say this. I've served this county thirty-four years honorably and with integrity. And whether my name is on a street sign this year, next year, or not at all, will never negate the fact that I was the first African-American Chief of Police for the Clayton County Police Department, and it's a fact that I am proud of. And I'll leave it right there. Any others? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
Uh, Resolution twenty-two-three fifty-three is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to direct appropriate staff to issue a statement regarding the January thirty-first, twenty-two-three press release from Chairman Jeffrey E. Turner, to authorize the chief operating officer to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It passes. What was your, uh, vote? I don't think we heard Commissioner Davis.
I'm sorry, nay.
Uh, three, two, it passes. Next.
Resolution, I'm not sure that is fifty-four, was that put on the consent agenda or is that put on the regular agenda?
Which one was it?
That's for the special facilities use request?
Yeah, it was consent agenda. It passed.
The next items are board appointments, starting with item number thirty-five.
All right, first board appointments to the Board of Ethics. This appointment began with District One, it continues in numerical order in the beginning of each year in January. This is the third year for this appointment. Therefore, the appointing Commissioner is District Three, Vice Chair Felicia Franklin.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Mr. Robert Bell, as, um, the previous person appointed is not able to serve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointments to the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Uh, this is to fill the expired term of Ms. Johnny Watkins, and this is my, uh, appointment. Madam Clerk, please hold that for another, uh, week. Next board appointments, Georgia Department of Community Affairs. This appointment is for the Balance of State of the Continuum of Care Board with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Clayton County's Community Development and HUD Programs Manager. Ms. Linda Boswell has been re-selected for this seat and reappointed, and the reappointment would need to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. New term is for two years, beginning immediately, expiring in January twenty-one, twenty-two-five. I make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is Animal Control Board, Kristy Thomas's term on the Animal Control Board will expire on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. Commissioner Franklin.
Mr. Chair, yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Kristy Thomas to this position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those, uh, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the Animal Control Board, Maya Chapman, Chapman's term on the Animal Control Board will expire on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. This is my appointment, I would like to reappoint Mila Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is also Animal Control Board, Gloria McCain's term on the Animal Control Board will expire on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring on March twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Gloria McCain.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppo- opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is for the Development Authority, Larry Vincent's term on the Development Authority of Clayton County will expire on March first, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for four years, expiring on March first, twenty-twenty-seven. This is full board appointment. Is there any recommendations? Uh, Chairman? Uh, Commissioner Davis?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Terry Baskins.
All right, I'll second that motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, four, one, it passes. Next board appointment is to Development Authority, Herman Andrew Junior, Junior's term on the Development Authority of Clayton County will expire on March first, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for four years, expiring on March first, twenty-twenty-seven. Full board appointment, any recommendations? Madam Clerk, hold that till next. Next board appointment is Water Authority, Michael Thomas's term on the Water Authority will expire March first, twenty-twenty-three. New term is for five years, expiring on March first, twenty-twenty-eight. Full board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
We did this last time. I make a recommendation that we reappoint, um, Mr. Mike Thomas to this board for the next five years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next items are board hearings. Citizens may speak for and against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation with a ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium. If you are speaking in favor of an item, you shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abuse of profane or derogatory language will not be permitted. The first item is item number forty-four, which is ordinance twenty-two-three dash fourteen. This is in conjunction with the BLC twenty-two-ten dash zero-two-four-nine, which is the text amendment.
Hold on just a second, excuse me.
Good evening. The applicant has requested that this be tabled to, uh, March twenty-first.
Okay, I'll place that in form of motion to table until March twenty-first. Is there a second?
To table.
This, it was a text amendment.
So why are we tableing a text amendment?
Cause the, cause it was brought up by a, was it a business owner?
No, I brought that text amendment, I'm not understanding why we're tableing it.
Ordinance number, uh, agenda item number forty-four, ordinance, uh, twenty-two-three dash fourteen, is related to hotels and motels.
Oh, they had the wrong one up.
You brought that?
No, they had the wrong ones in front of us, I'm sorry, thank you.
In the, uh, due process for that.
So again, I offered that up as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Next item is item number forty-five, ordinance twenty-two-three dash forty-one. This is a resolution for initiation of a text amendment.
Yes, so this actually does not require a public hearing, this is simply a initiation. So, um, if ordinance twenty-two-three forty-one, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County through the Community Development Department to initiate text amendments to Appendix A, Article One, Section one point five, defined words, Article Three, Section three point two-three, UV, urban village district intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, excuse me, conditional uses, Article Three, Section three point two-four, UV, urban village district standards, and Article Three, Section three point three-six, land use matrix. Article Six, development standards regarding accessory permitted and conditional uses along with development standards in the UV zoning district, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And again, this will come back to the board for a vote on those changes in about two months.
So it's just a reading of it?
Yes, this is just the initiation. Normally it's going to consent agenda, but I think it was just inadvertently put on the regular agenda.
All right, Madam Clerk, next.
Our next item-
I mean, you all still need to, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So you just need to vote, uh, motion or vote like you normally do, but you don't need a public hearing on this.
Okay, I got you. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number forty-six, Resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-eight. This is in conjunction with BLC twenty-three oh-one dash zero-two-seven-three.
Good, good evening. This is a, um, boundary map amendment, um, which is a request by the Board of Commissioners to adjust the boundaries of the Panhandle overlay district on the zoning map. The affected boundaries are within the fifth district, um, includes, uh, portions of land lots forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, seven-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, one-eleven, and one-twelve. This is the current map. Um, on December twentieth, Board of Commissioners determined that it was less an interest to remove three hundred and sixty-four parcels from the Panhandle overlay district, um, or to allow the staff to proceed with this amendment. And the red, um, boundary shows the limits of this boundary map amendment. Uh, staff's recommendation is approval, same as Zack's recommendation.
All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this request, then please come forward. Anybody would like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, Commissioner Franklin.
I move that we, um, accept the Resolution twenty-two-three as read and approved by Zack as well as, uh, the staff.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Next item, item number forty-seven, BLC twenty-two-ten dash zero-two-four-one, which is for a conditional use permit to install a billboard at ten-seventy-five South Loop Road.
Um, this property is in the H-SI zoning district, um, and it's a property consisting of nine point four-seven acres, is further known as parcel thirteen zero-four-one zero-five-six A zero-zero, I mean, zero-four, zero-five-six zero-zero-one A, and is located between I two-eight-five between, is located on I two-eight-five between Highway one-thirty-nine Rivetera Road and South Loop Road. This is also, um, property owned by the city of Atlanta, um, but it's still in uncorporated Clayton County. Staff's recommendation was approval, Zack's recommendation was denial.
All right, is the applicant present? Please come forward. Please state your name and who you're representing, and please also, if there's any minutes that you would like to reserve for rebuttal, should somebody be in opposition to your request.
Sure. Uh, my name is Brian Gaylor, um, I'm with Clear Channel Outdoor, our offices are in Marietta, Georgia. I also have Mr. Joseph Anfield L. here with the city of Atlanta to help address any questions you may have. Clear Channel in two thousand and eighteen-
Do you want to save any minutes for rebuttal? Two or three minutes, you was like, should somebody be in opposition to you?
I don't think I'll last five minutes to, so I should hopefully have five minutes left. Yes, but, um, but certainly.
Five minutes.
In two thousand and eighteen, Clear Channel won the, uh, RFP for the advertising rights at, uh, the airports. We're under that RFP, we're under that contract right now. As a part of that contract, they had requested for us to explore, uh, advertising outside of the walls of the property, and we looked at numerous parcels. Uh, this one, uh, was probably the, the most obvious, running two-eighty-five on the southeast, I'll call it, uh, section of the airport. It's high industrial, there's not billboards to the north and south of it for probably a mile each way, and, um, it's currently owned by the city of Atlanta, operating as an office facility, and, um, we will, if approved, um, we would build the, build it, the city would own it, we would maintain it, uh, we would manage it, and then once the contract comes up for renewal or extension or whatever for the advertising for the airport, whoever wins that would take over the maintenance management of that board. would take over the maintenance management of that board. So the permits will reside with the City of Atlanta. We're here for, as a consulting, to try to help them with the process, we're one of ma, three major billboard companies in the Atlanta area. And if there's any questions, I'm, I'm open to them right now, or for Mr. Anfield.
We'll get to them in just a minute. Right now, this is, were you finished, sir, I'm sorry?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, right now, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request, please come forward. Anybody would like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I think I got something to say.
Come forward, Mr. Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I would just like the Commissioners and Chairman to be aware that any advertisement that would put Clayton County in a negative, negative feature, just, just be aware of that and make sure that nothing negative, because they have the advertising rights right there, that nothing negative is brought forward, forward through that signage in Clayton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Anybody else got anything to say in opposition to? Anybody in opposition to? All right, sir, do you have any follow-up for your five minutes?
I, I'd like to say that both the county ordinance and the state ordinance, as far as vicinity's, what you can show on these, the industry, we're a part, I'm past president of the State Association, we're a part of that association, and to be a member of that, we're not even allowed to advertise even stores, like, you know, that you're, you know, negative stores, you know, which I don't want to say it out loud, but- Yes, yes.
Mr. Garber, please, Mr. Garber.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's-
Sir, address the board, please.
Cannot do that. So, and in addition to this, it opens up the doors for GBI, FBI. Clayton County, we do a lot of PSA for different communities with hiring sheriffs or hiring, you know, things. So, these are the things that we can bring to that, it's low cost because it's just a graphic, we're not sending people out there to put it on our digital boards. And, yeah, so, I-
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right, any questions from the board?
Any other?
All right, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I'm going along with Zach's recommendation of denial.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number forty-eight, BLC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-six-five, which is to amend a medium-density residential to mixed-use for the development of a medical office.
Is it, Mr. Chair? Clarity, is it six-five or five-six? Zero-two-five-six or six-five?
Madam Clerk.
I have six-five, the companion is five-six.
Gotcha, thank you.
This amendment, this is a future lands map amendment. And the property is, is consisting of plus or minus two point eight-eight-one acres, is located at the corner of Camelot Parkway and Wilson Road near Terra Road, US Highway one, US Highway nineteen, is in the North Terra Overlay District, and is further known as parcel thirteen-one-seven-four-D-A-zero-three-five. Currently RS-one-ten zoning district, Highway's across the street from MX District and O-I. The medium-density also is across the street from mixed-use, future land use map category. This is the proposed site plan. And the elevations meet the code. Staff's recommendation and along with Zach's recommendation was for approval.
All right, is the, the applicant present? Please come forward, sir. Please state your name, and if you would like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal.
My name is Dustin Duval with Alex Rousch Architects, and I think the answer to that question is yes.
How many?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, go ahead, please proceed.
All right, so as you know, we are asking to rezone it from RS-one-ten, which is residential, to office and institutional to allow for a dialysis clinic to be placed on this site. And I'm not sure if the slides that I sent to run y'all through the layout is, there we go, I can walk y'all through that, so the, that's much cleaner. The, this is the proposed building. It is off of Camelot Parkway and Wilson Road, and Wilson Road is very close to Terra Boulevard. You would enter the site through one of the three curb cuts to the right side, where that box is, is where the entrance would be. The drive around the back would be for back of house, has a dumpster, it has storage, all of that, so that would allow that drive to be out of the way of the main stretch. Have forty-seven parking spaces that meets code. And I'm happy to ask any other questions, or answer any other questions that y'all might have. We have elevations as well that I can run you through if you would like that, which I think might be the next slide, hopefully. Okay, yeah, so this is the proposed floor plan, as I said, you would enter on the right side. This would house a PDHHD, which is a paratonil dialysis, it's a different type, and that's on the bottom portion, bottom right-hand portion. And the idea behind this layout is that the, each of those radius are, would be gardens. So you would have a focal point of a garden, and a focal point of another garden as well, to try to bring the ins, the exterior inside, because these people are hooked up for a very long time, and you want to give them that experience, like they're not in a typical dialysis clinic that's just very clinical, and, you know, it's stressful, and it's just not a very enjoyable experience. So we're trying to create something better, hence the name Dialysis Spa. And so here's a blow-up of the right-hand portion, you would enter in, main vestibule, have two different waiting rooms, you would have the PDHHD, which is through a cavity, and then you would have the chronic side, which is the remainder of the clinic, with the nurses looking over it. The offices would be at the top portion, and if you go to the next slide, the bottom-left portion is where the back of house, the storage, the RO, contaminated waste, that, those sort of items. But there is a lot of glass on this building, as you will see on the next slide. So those, the top image is looking at it from that key, looking at the bottom up. The next image is the other direction, the entrance would be the bottom image. And the materials that we're proposing for this are a light gray brick, light gray stucco, some granite to bring in the granite that's around here, and at the, at the entrance, and glazing, a bunch of, like I said, a bunch of glass to try to bring the exterior inside for the patrons. And then I think we have some, here's some 3D renderings of some initial ideas, obviously, the building is not going to be on a giant piece of grass, there's a driveway that goes through there, but just some studies of what it would look like from different angles, the bottom right-hand portion would be sitting, a patient sitting in, having their dialysis treatment, looking out at the garden, and then you can go to the next slide. And then these are some more studies of what it would look like, the PDHHD, the four stations that are different, is that middle picture, where we've denoted with a different kind of canopy to show you that there's, there's a difference, but then they're also all within the same area. And that is the long and the short of that.
All right, we have about forty seconds left for anybody who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request, anybody like to speak in favor of? All right, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? You have anything in addition to say?
I think that is it, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner, before you vote, just wanted to remind you that you are considering right now the future land use map amendment?
Yes, thank you. I move we approve BLC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-six-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Next item, item number forty-nine, BLC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-five-six, which is to rezone for RS-one-ten to O-I for a medical office.
So this is a companion case to the previous agenda item. Again, the proposal is to rezone this from RS-one-ten to O-I. And staff's recommendation was approval, along with Zach's recommendation.
Applicant. State your name.
I'm here again, Dustin Duval with Alex Rousch Architects.
Any minutes for a rebuttal? Any minutes for a rebuttal?
Maybe two minutes.
Two minutes, all right, put eight on the time, yes, sir, go ahead.
We are asking to rezone from RS-one-ten, which is residential, to O-I Office Industrial. And this is what we discussed earlier, do I need to, for the record, I guess, go through all of it again? The, the site plan that we discussed, with, it is at the corner of Camelot and Wilson Road. And the entrance is on the right-hand side, back of house is at the rear, and get to the next slide. These are the elevations, we will be using light brick, light stucco, glass storefront, and granite at the entrance. Go to the next one, and that is all.
All right, anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Any opposition? We got two minutes, you good?
I'm good, thank you again for your time.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, and just for, for the citizens to know, this is not truly in a residential area. This actually, with the way it sits up on Camelot, it's kind of an annex road off, off of Terra, so that's why we have to rezone that. But I approve, I move that we approve BLC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-five-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item, item number fifty, BLC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-five-eight, which is for a conditional use permit to convert an existing freestanding building into an accessory dwelling.
The, this location is at eight-nine-twenty Thornton Road, Jonesburg, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. Said property consisting of plus or minus three point two acres, is located on Thornton Road and Thornton Boulevard between Lake Jodico Road and Cyan Trail. It is in the east-west overlay district, and is further known as parcel zero-six-zero-zero-three-C-A-zero-one-five. This is the existing structure. The, the combined square footage is fourteen hundred square feet, seven hundred forty-two plus minus on the first and the second floor. The staff's recommendation was that the owner must demonstrate sufficient primary system and one-hundred percent conventional repair area for the new dwelling, and this is regarding the septic tank. Zach's recommendation was same as staff, however, rifidinal condition, which is dwelling should be occupied by the applicant's daughter only, if occupied by any other, must come back before the board for acceptance.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward. State your name and any minutes for a rebuttal.
My name is Sharon Davis, and five minutes for rebuttal? Yes, I just want to turn this existing building into a structure so that my daughter, who has epilepsy, can come and live in that unit. Now, they say daughter only, but my daughter has a daughter too, so it'll be my daughter and my granddaughter, is that? Okay, so, it'll be a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath unit in the back end of my property. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Public hearing, anybody like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anything in addition you'd like to add? No, okay.
Oh, well, I do have the permit for the septic tank, I think that was one of their issues, I received that, so.
Gotcha. Commissioner Davis.
Ms. Davis, I would like to table this, this is really the first, I'm reading this and becoming aware of it. And there's a whole lot of questions that I have with you, and actually with Mr. NGK as well. So I'd lo, I'd like to have your permission to table this.
For how long?
Can we pass it next month? Say one month?
March twenty-first, I think it is.
He has a sick daughter.
And it's been four months since, I mean, already, and-
I understand that you have the septic, I, I have questions such as, what does the code allow in many of these backyards for a secondary dwelling? For it, what do we, is this setting precedence, I understand the
The SR one-eighty-
urgency with your daughter, and her daughter, and your granddaughter, yes.
SR one-eighty allows for an accessory dwelling.
Ms. Davis, again.
Yeah, it's the, the, I think, Commissioner, what you might be thinking about is the accessory structure. But the code actually allows an accessory dwelling.
Okay.
Within that zoning code.
It does?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. So then, why would we put limitations on how many folks could live in there? One or two, if it's?
Based on what the applicant said, I think it's the pleasure of the board to amend whatever Zach is saying, because her daughter has a daughter.
Correct.
So, it's up to the board to amend that and approve accordingly.
Since that is there, then I would recommend we approve it, but I want to remove the condition of the number of entities in that dwelling.
Remove condition number two.
Correct.
All right, is there-
Second.
Can I wait till I call it? Is there a mo, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
You got me, Ms. Davis, you got me on that one.
Those, those in favor, aye. Issue unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item is item number fifty-one, BLC twenty-two-ten dash zero-two-five-three, which is to amend the mixed-use to medium-density residential for a single-family detached development.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, this is Aunt, for the record, Angela Rambo, a consultant for the Planning Department. Next up, we have, as stated, BLC two-two-one-zero-zero-two-five-three, and this is an amendment to the future land use map. Addresses five-eight-one-three, five-eight-one-seven, five-eight-two-three, five-eight-two-seven, five-eight-three-one, five-eight-three-five, and five-eight-three-nine Maddox Road. As stated, we are, the applicant is asking to change the designation from mixed-use to medium-density- to medium-density residential, and the intention is to develop a single-family detached development. You can see the zoning map shown there. Subject parcels. Proposed site plan. Staff's recommendation was approval of this change, and the ZAG's recommendation was approval as well.
Is the applicant present? Mr. McSwain?
All right. Good evening, Chair and Board members. How are you doing?
Good.
This request...
State your name for us.
Oh, no problem. Sorry about that.
Any minutes for rebuttal?
Okay.
It hasn't been that long since you've been gone.
Yes. Tyler McSwain, behalf of Battle Law, P.C., 3562 Haber Sham in Tucker, Georgia. This request, following the other future land use map amendments, we did send in a formal letter to table this request until we get the zonings passed ZAG, so you all can hear this concurrently together. So we hope to have you hear this in March.
Okay, so you're asking to table items fifty-two and fifty-three.
Regarding Rex and Maddox Road, yes.
Or is it, oh, it's fifty-three separate?
Fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
That's correct.
Is that your request, sir?
Yes, that's correct. That's your request.
Commissioner Anderson, how would you like to proceed?
That's fine. I move that we table it until our next meeting, which will be, let me look at my calendar.
March twenty-first.
What is it, March ten, was it March fifteen?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
I'm sorry, twenty-first? Okay. And we can table it, I move that we table it until March twenty-first.
Could you call out the numbers?
Fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions? Those in favor of I?
I.
Opposed? Issued Adams.
All right, thank you.
Next item, item number fifty-four, BOC 2212-0266.
This is a request by Battle Law, P.C., to modify zoning conditions approved under BOC 2202-0182, which is a conditional use permit for car sales allowed to operate at said seven-ten Terra Boulevard, Jonesburg, Georgia 30236. Said property is in the GB General Business Zone District and Terra Boulevard Overlay District. Said property consists of plus or minus two point zero six seven acres with frontage on Terra Boulevard and Main Street and is north of South Lake Drive, and is further known as parcel thirteen-two-zero-seven CA zero-zero-six. There were five conditions that were approved last year. The, this modification request is to remove condition number five, which is to install six-foot sidewalks along all road fundages, which are Terra Boulevard and South Main Street. This is the proposed site plan. And what they plan on it look like. ZAG's, staff's recommendation was denial along with ZAG's recommendation.
Applicant.
Good evening again. Tyler McSwain, 3562 Haber Sham, representative behalf of Battle Law, P.C., Chairman of Board and also for Commissioner Davis. You approve this project, you all as a board approve this project for car sales. We got the CUP, eventually got into the site design and more to the several site design layout, part of the process, and found out that there were some significant changes that were impacted from the GDOT and also the Transportation Development Team, identified some things that really made us come back and try to reconsider some of the things to kind of make this project work. I know we wanted to set some time to bring both Commissioner Davis and also the Transportation Development Department together to kind of discuss it a little bit further. So if we could potentially postpone this until we can get that meeting done, I think that can kind of serve justice for the Commissioner and also this board as well.
Commissioner Davis.
And you'd like to table it until, for how long?
Thirty days. I believe we can, we can get that accomplished.
Okay. So I move that we table BOC 2212-0266 until, was it March twenty-first?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I?
I.
Opposed? Issued Adams.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Our last zoning item is item number fifty-five, BOC 2210-0243.
This is a request by the Board Commissioners to adjust the boundaries permitted to uses and development standards of the Ellenwood PUD along with rezoning various parcels. The boundaries are within the twelfth district and include portions of land lots two fifteen, two thirty-four, two thirty-five, two thirty-six, two forty-five, two forty-six, and two forty-seven. The left-hand side is a depiction of what the original PUD, Ellenwood PUD, was back in two thousand and three. The right-hand side depicts the zoning map for this area, what it looks like today. And so there's twenty-two areas, twenty-three areas that staff is designating as part of the Ellenwood PUD. And the, these, and the areas include townhomes, apartments, townhome style, single-family detached, single-family detached slash park, multifamily parks, mixed-use, mixed-use data center, and road improvements. The, on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and three, the Board Commissioners approved the original villages of Ellenwood PUD, and there have been various amendments since then. There are two hundred and eighty-five residential lots in the Village Park and Village Crossing subdivisions, along with seven common area parcels and twenty parcels that were part of the Ellenwood Commercial. This is the original amended PUD decision letter. The proposal is to, to remove one of thirty-six parcels from the, from the Ellenwood PUD as shown on the zoning map. Brook Eight PUD is the one of thirty-six parcels. Grand Forest Three PUD is twenty-three parcels. Arlington Place was platted as RS 180. So the, the proposal is to rezone those said four parcels back to RS 180. And same thing for Ivy Trace, where it was platted as RS 180. The proposal is to rezone those eighty-eight parcels back to RS 180. And then LI is one parcel. There's a modification recently for industrial and, but that modification did not really remove this, that parcel from the Ellenwood PUD. The proposal is also to rezone to the Ellenwood PUD, twenty-one parcels that are in AG, three parcels that are in GB, five parcels that are in MXI, fifty-seven parcels that are in PUD as a, this is to, to make it clear that the Board Commissioners intended those fifty-seven to be within the Ellenwood PUD, and then five parcels that are in RMTSF. We went through the, the original decision letter along with the GB, OI, and MX zoning districts to pull out the permitted uses that we believe should be permitted in, in the mixed-use areas along with the conditional uses. And we also looked at what is currently on site as well. For instance, there's a small, I believe it's a small box variety discount store there currently, and there's a special event facility there currently. And the left-hand side is the existing prohibited uses pursuant to the two thousand and three decision letter. And then we're proposing a few more uses that would be prohibited as well. The proposed single-family detached residence standards, these were taken from the existing plats of, for Village Crossing and Village Park. And with accepts, what ZAG wanted to make clear was that new homes should be ten, should have a minimum side yard setback of ten feet. And staff agreed, unless they are subject to previously mentioned recorded plats, meaning that if you are in Vince Parker Village Crossing, then you would be five-foot setback if the house was destroyed or if there happens to be a vacant lot within those two, those recorded subdivisions. And same thing with the types of material where the subdivision plats were thirty-three percent of the constructed homes must have full masonry facade on, on the front. Decent thirty-three percent must have masonry accents and water table around the building sides and rear. And so ZAG wanted to set five percent. However, staff believes that we should make, yes, we should increase beyond the subdivision plats of what's on those subdivision plats. However, we should maintain the, the previously approved architecture and parent standards unless the lots are subject to previous amendments and recorded plats. And the main difference is fifty percent. The proposed townhome residential, this came from the existing RM zoning district standards. The proposed RM residential standards, again, that came from the RM zoning district. Proposed mixed-use residential on top of non-residential standards. This is from the existing MX zoning district. And then the non-residential standards, these came from the, the Ellenwood Commercial subdivision plat. Decently, we recommend that recorded restrictive or protective provisions recorded in deed book ninety-four fifty-one, page two ninety-five, shall continue to encumber each and every parcel of land, residential, commercial, or otherwise within the PUD that are within the boundaries of the legal description provided within said covenants. And so this is a reverting of, of the existing condition from the, from the decision letter. Decently, any property that is currently landlocked cannot be landlocked by the development. The Board of Commissioners shall receive, shall review and approve site plans of new non-residential development along with major subdivisions. Decently, rock and treasure shall be distributed throughout the PUD. And staff did agree with ZAG's recommendation, number one. However, staff, Zack's recommendation, number two, staff is recommending that we refer back to section sixty-seven AA eight dash zero-two, which was previously approved by the Board in twenty-one, I believe.
All right, this is a board-initiated, oh, come on.
And just to add context to this, I would like to thank Commissioner Anderson for the many months it took. This is our first foray into small area planning. The Ellenwood PUD was a little bit, didn't develop as planned due to the housing crisis. So we worked with the citizens and had numerous meetings over the weekends and in the evenings, excuse me, to come up with the things you've heard. So we actually took the whole PUD and reworked it. And allowable uses were the voices of the, of the residents in that area and that of the Commissioner. So that's why, it just took months. So that's the work that was done. It was painstaking, sometimes frustrating, but we finally got it done. We are doing the same thing in another district now, so you'll get to see that. So that's what I wanted to add context to all that you saw, how we came about.
Thank you. Again, this is a board-initiated request, so at this time, it's a public hearing. For anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in favor of?
Yes, Timothy Vondell Jefferson, Clayton County. I'm in favor of this particular project, but I have some concerns about the verbiage in the ZAG recommendations. Number two, it states all new development building materials, seventy-five percent masonry, twenty-five percent approved cold product. Now, does that masonry, is that brick, or is that a hardy plank? Or is the other twenty-five percent vinyl siding? It's not spelled out to be specific. I just have some concerns that I thought that we were trying to get away from by the signing. I think that's one of the twenty-five percent approvals.
Ms. D. J. K.
A vinyl siding is not allowed in the county. All that is, I mean, for years now, we have, every exterior finish of any building must be a cementous material. So if you're not breaking, you're using a cementous material. So.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Anybody in opposition? All right, Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening. I just want to first thank Mr. G K. and Cheryl and the rest of the team for coming out. I also want to thank the citizens of Ellenwood for helping as we continue to work on our community planning units and as well as the PUD. I see we have Mr. Gusta in the audience and anyone else who is from Ellenwood. Again, thank you for coming out and working with us to make this possible. It was very painstaking at some points in time, but it was a good painstaking thing that we had to come together and we agreed on some things, we disagreed on some things. But, you know, that's a part of government, and that's how we put good projects together, and that's how we move economic development within the county. So again, the citizens, thank you so much. Thank you for being a part of this, and thank you for letting your voices be heard. So at this time, I would like to approve the BOC initiated, to, BOC initiated to adjust the boundaries of Ellenwood. Along with the approval, I want to also add in those conditions to go along with this approval at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and done. Those in favor of I?
I.
Opposed? Issued Adams.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Orlando Good. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, unincorporated, Clayton County. Madam Clerk, Commissioner, Chairman Turner. I attended the February 11th candidate for sheriff's forum. The interim sheriff, Levon Allen, did not attend. The candidate's average law enforcement experience is 25 years. The interim sheriff is eight years. The issues they discussed were responsibility, transparency, and accountability. The lack of respect for employees and detainees, focus on the jail, court security, and serving warrants, assist but not merge with the Clayton County Police Department, financial mismanagement in the sheriff's office, seizure and forfeiture assets account balance is zero, approximately $468 million in lawsuits, one and a half million dollars spent adding and removing a sheriff's name on vehicles. Three commissioners have adopted the sheriff's strategies, unnecessary and costly lawsuits, removing employees for personal reasons, hiring people who have been under financial investigation, cronyism and nepotism. The sheriff hired an individual with no law enforcement background, then promoted her to chief of staff. Now he just appointed his godson interim sheriff. The commissioners hired David Corbin and Terminus to investigate the CFO. Now they just hired a deputy chief financial officer. When is the phase one audit for commissioners by Robert, David Roberts of Malden and Jenkins? And will phase two?
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Audit?
Time's up.
The sheriff's office?
Gwen Gooden.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. Malcolm X stated that rules are for everyone or no one. No one is above the law. We have a commissioner who believes rules do not apply to her. We have a commissioner that has the audacity to state we have a chairman who doesn't enforce the rules when she is the greatest offender of not following the rules. She has constantly broken Clayton County ordinance, Article II Code of Ethics. On November 15, 2022, she voted to have we the taxpayers to pay her excessive legal fees, which was a blatant conflict of interest. However, that vote was invalidated due to the lack of three affirmative votes required to pass. On February 7, 2023, after executive session, the matter regarding her excessive legal fees was brought up again for a vote. Although she knew she was required to abstain from voting, she voted for her legal fees to be paid anywhere. Where's the accountability for her actions? Unfortunately, there is no penalty imposed for commissioners misconduct other than being sanctioned. However, only the commissioners get to determine if the commissioner should be sanctioned and what type of sanction should be implemented. Bottom line, there is no penalty. We have an interim sheriff using our taxpayer monies to put up campaign bulletin boards and signs for himself. Also, the interim sheriff stated he believes in treating people the way he wants to be treated. Does that mean he wants to be put in the infoments restraint chair? Let it be known that he's not the sheriff yet. Thank you.
Stephanie Gittens. Stephanie Gittens.
My name is Stephanie Gittens. I am currently homeless because shelter that me and my daughter were staying at Cavalry Refuge Center in Forest Park, Georgia. They only give you 21-day program at the shelter and expect you to find housing in that short amount of time. It's not realistic and it doesn't make any sense. I'm on a waiting list for a couple of different places and the connections are not available anywhere at this time. At the shelter, it was a little inconvenient, very inconvenient, because I found bedbugs in our room and I got bitten a couple of times. I addressed this to, this and other issues to the director, Ms. Tawana, also asking for more time and an extension at the shelter to accommodate me for getting bit. The director, Tawana, said she can move me to another room and the bug people will be out Thursday, which is this Thursday, the 23rd. I don't want to have to sleep in my car because my 21 days are up. Some things at the shelter were not addressed to me in the beginning during my intake. Also, they have transitional housing for clients there, but you have to be working a full-time job, which is not good in my circumstance because I am permanently disabled and have multiple sclerosis. I can't go back to work due to my illness and the Board of Education homeless department has extended a helpful hand and some resources to help me, but that's not good enough. I need, something needs to change and I need a housing voucher, permanent, affordable income housing, transitional housing, long-term, a house, just whatever it is. I cannot be out on the street in the shelter because they let you out at 6:00 AM in the morning and you're just out all day and you can't come back till 5:30 in the afternoon. I had to go to the hospital two weeks ago because physically my body couldn't take it. My body was shutting down on me. And the director, she just did not see any or show any concern.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time is up. But I agree that there needs to be a long-term solution to a homeless situation and that is something that definitely that Commissioner Davis and other commissioners have been talking about. So we're definitely sympathetic to your needs. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Franklin.
Chief, can you all connect, please, through? See what we can do. Thank you. I'm so sorry about that.
Panzi Walker.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Panzi Walker and I live in Jonesboro. So I have a question. First of all, I would like to say to Ms. Anderson, I was very good, it was good to hear that something is going on in our district, that the constituents are having a role to play in, and I'm very interested in being a part of that process. Okay? I never know when we're having meetings in District One and I would like to know when they are, where they are, so that I can be a part of what's going on in my community. I'm interested also in knowing something about tier-one status. I was made aware recently that Clayton County is in a tier-one status and it's the only county in the metro area that is. And I'm wondering if someone here can elaborate on what that means and how long we, I know we've been in it last year and we're in, we're there again this year, and I'm just wondering what exactly does that mean? What's happening in order to move us from that status because apparently it's not good? And I see that there is a meeting here coming up in March, State of Clayton?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that going to be addressed at that meeting?
State of, go ahead, I don't want to cut your minute.
No, I'm done. I just want some answers.
Okay. The State of the County address, basically addresses the status of the county, where we are, what division for the future looks like, and what the accomplishments of the county has been. But we can get you answers to those questions. Get with Mr. C.O. right here, Mr. Stanford, and if you give him your information, we'll make sure that everybody who has anything to do with the questions that you have asked, give you an answer.
Thank you so much.
Also, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Also, if you need to know anything as far as the meetings are concerned, I'll put you on the eBlast, that's a great way. And also, we have signs up through the community and we also do emails as well. So I'll get your information from Mr. Stanford and your address and everything and we'll go.
He just wanted to get a card for you.
Oh, okay.
But also in addition to, if you go to our website, claytoncountyga.gov, that has a list of all of our events as they come up each month, they'll be listed on the website as well.
Well, that's where I saw the.
Okay, State of the County.
Yeah, the State of Clayton.
But there's so much more that's on there. If you click on the communications, you'll get some text messages as well as emails.
Okay, I'm looking forward to hearing from, you know, all of you.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, I live in this county and I do want to know what's going on here. And, you know, just to be quite transparent, I've been living in this county for 20 years. I've just been in and out, but I'm here now to stay long-term and I want to know what's going on where I live because I see a lot of stuff happening and I'm like, wow, look at this. So I thank you for your time and I look forward to engaging with you again.
Well, we thank you for your interest and thank you as a citizen for wanting to be plugged in and knowledgeable about what's going on in your county. So thank you.
Bye-bye.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated, Clayton County. I brought something to the board's attention on the last board meeting about a P, oh, a public information officer. Now, as a consultant, I negotiate with businesses. I had a meeting last Friday. Fortunately, there was a prominent citizen in this, in this facility where we were meeting. And one of the things that is hard to overcome, we can deal with the medium-income level, we can justify that, but it's difficult to overcome nonsense when there, the image of the county amongst its leaders is deteriorating. And people that invest, and this is real talk, are very concerned about the leadership. So we are, in my opinion, in a crisis management state and I think that we need a professional board in to assist the commissioners to control their verbiage because the Bible is very clear. Life and death is in the power of the tongue and we are destroying ourselves with that tongue that's uncontrolled. So I would greatly appreciate it if y'all would really consider a public information officer for the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Topic of conversation today comes under two headings. One, education. Education for the county employees. Yes, I am in favor of using taxpayer monies for further education of any county employee, education in the field of which they are working, to better serve the taxpayers and to be more proficient in their service to the taxpayer. Page two, legal services. Innocent until proven guilty? Yes, I'm in favor of taxpayer-paid legal service to the commissioners, whether as plaintiff or defendant. Yes, even if the cost is more than council's normal cost goes beyond the standards due to council's expertise in the field of contention. However, if you lose your case, your paid legal fees be refunded to the taxpayers of Clayton County. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing there are no questions, I am glad to see that you are all in favor of my recommendations. Thank you.
Joseph Anfield L. D.C. Craddock.
Donald D.C. Craddock, unincorporated, Clayton County. Last meeting that I came to, I asked you all to give us answers on the Roman United Deal. $559,000 was given to a company that's now not a company on a deal that's not a deal and it's taxpayers' money. We need to know who authorized them to receive this money, who vetted them as a company to do business in Clayton County, because we look ridiculous doing a groundbreaking on a company that's no longer a company. Also, the Africa Children's Fund, it's $9 million and we were at the bottom of the totem pole when it came to servicing our citizens in this county in a rescue of them due to a pandemic with the rent. Other counties are bragging on how well they've done and we can't brag on it because we don't have the data to show what they did with the money. And, and we need an accounting for that. We vote, each and every one of you all who knocked on doors and pleaded with us to vote for you. We vote for you not to vote for Nova, who don't do the job that they should do, to keep getting money from us. It's disheartening as a resident of Clayton County to come before the board that we voted for and nobody's upset about our money being spent and not accounted for. We want to know where it is. We want to know who authorized money to go to these places and everybody will be held accountable for this. We will not stop. We will not sleep. We will not allow you to rest until we know what's going on in our county. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Yes. Is there a need for executive session?
Okay.
Of course, of course there is.
Of course. The trifecta, litigation, real estate, and personnel.
All right, is that motion going to executive session for real estate, litigation, and personnel?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna take it the motion was made by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Franklin. Are there any questions? Here and done, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Madam Clerk, you ready?
I'm ready.
Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please take them both together.
All right, I have one settlement agreement in the matter of Jonathan Lewis, Clayton County, and Demetrius Christian in the amount of $250,000. And this is related to an accident that occurred on or about October 24th, 2021, at O'Neare Jonesboro Road and Battle Creek Road in Clayton County. The next is, it's one case, but it's two, two releases. The first is in the matter of Latoya Pouncy and Fernando Cannon, his parents of Jeremiah Cannon, deceased versus Clayton County. And this is related to an accident that occurred between Jeremiah Cannon and a vehicle being operated by Deonte Y. Singer that occurred on or about June 10th, 2020, in Clayton County. And this is in the amount of $245,000. And the next is a release for $5,000 to Latoya Pouncy as administrator of the estate of Jeremiah Cannon. And this is related to the same incident, that being the collision between Jeremiah Cannon and the vehicle operated by Deonte Y. Singer that occurred on or about June 10th, 2020, in Clayton County.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn. Now, make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.